I believe to the United States of America and to your God, who which stands one nation under God, in the municipal with liberty and justice for all.
I have no idea what our.
Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners' public meeting for Tuesday, January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. The time is now seven oh six. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter two thirty-one, Public Law nineteen seventy-five, notice of this meeting was published in December seventh, two thousand and twenty-three issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's office. Commissioner Kelly's absent excuse this evening. Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Petracca?
Here.
Commissioner Tucci?
Here.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Here.
All present, except for Commissioner Kelly's absent excuse this evening.
Minutes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Yes, we have a Board of Commissioner meeting minutes for December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca? Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Reports, Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, Mayor, I have a Shaytree report for the month of December two thousand and twenty-three.
Commissioner Petracca?
Yes, I have my Department of Public Safety report. Thank you.
Bills, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Bill is for January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Public Affairs eighty-two thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and fourteen cents. Revenue and Finance, three million eight hundred and eighty-one thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars and sixty-one cents. Public Safety, zero. Public Works, twenty-three thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars and seven cents. Parks and Public Property, one million six thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars and forty-eight cents. Water Utility, eight thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents. Payroll as of Friday, January fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, regular payroll total, nine hundred and thirty thousand eight hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty-four cents. Overtime payroll total, sixty-seven thousand seven dollars and sixty-seven cents. Total payroll, nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars and eleven cents for a grand total of six million eight hundred and eighty thousand and thirty-nine cents.
Move the bills.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca? Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And that's it for bills.
Public comment on agenda items only. Would anybody like to address the Board of Commissioner on agenda items only? Seeing none, let's move on to Commissioner announcements.
Nothing for me this evening, Mayor.
Nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
I just have tomorrow night at Public Safety at seven o'clock, we're going to be kicking off our Neighborhood Watch meeting. We have gotten a big response. Thank God. We're asking the residents for their help. Mayor or my commissioners, if you are available, please attend. I'm sure it's going to be very informative. That's all I have, Mayor.
Good luck, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Let's move on to ordinance introductions. Commissioner Evans?
Yes, Mayor, I have one this evening for the purchase of a vehicle for the Department of Health that was destroyed in one of the recent storms. Ordinance providing for vehicle acquisition in and by the Township of Nutley in the County of Essex, State of New Jersey, appropriating forty-two thousand five hundred dollars to replace a vehicle used by the Department of Health. This is a fully funded ordinance. There's no additional money required for debt service or bonding or anything like that. I move that this ordinance be passed through a second reading and will be signed together with an ordinance recorded by law. For further consideration of said ordinance for final passage, the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on February sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca? Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Let's move on to public hearings. Ordinance number three, five, three, six, an ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley in the County of Essex, creating Chapter one twelve, Municipal Water and Sewer Utility of the Township of Nutley. I move to open the public hearing. Would anybody like to be heard on ordinance number three, five, three, six? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca? Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca? Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Ordinance number three, five, three, seven, an ordinance of the Board of Commissioners attached Nutley in the County of Essex, establishing a sewer utility fund. Would anybody like to be heard on ordinance number three, five, three, seven? Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Ordinance number three, five, three, eight. Commissioner Evans?
Hello, Mayor. Yes, Mayor, this is simply is a change to our ordinance that we previously established to lower the fee for compliance with our licensing regulation for the registration fee, reducing the fee from one hundred dollars down to twenty-five dollars for certain sized businesses and down to, from fifty dollars down to twenty dollars. So just reducing the fees.
Would anybody like to be heard on ordinance number three, five, three, eight? Seeing none?
Move to close.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Three, five, three, nine, Commissioner?
We'll have to do everything tonight.
Says by you on behalf of the board.
Well, I don't remember what this one is. Oh, this is, this is a, there's been revisions to the paid to play to pay rules. And this one is simply rescinding our local ordinance so that we can make sure that we're always in compliance with the revisions for the state statute, under state statute. So basically, it's eliminating redundancy.
Open the public hearing on ordinance number three, five, three, nine. Anybody like to be heard on ordinance number three, five, three, nine? Seeing none?
Move to close.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. This is ordinance number three, five, four, oh, and ordinance to amend the ordinance codified in the Code of the Township of Nutley, Chapter two, two, eight, inside of vehicles and traffic, particularly Article seven, Special Zones and Areas, Section twenty-eight, oh, and P, federal bus stops, to remove the location set forth in. Anybody like to be heard on ordinance number three, five, four, oh? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Ordinance number three, five, four, one, an ordinance to amend the ordinance codified in the Code of Township of Nutley, Chapter three, four, nine, flood plain management regulations. Anybody like to be heard on ordinance number three, five, four, one? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Let's move on to resolutions. I'll take Commissioner Kelly's when I do mine. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas township desires to constitute a twenty, twenty twenty-four temporary capital budget by inserting there in an item to purchase a replacement vehicle for the Department of Public Affairs, which was lost arising from a storm, from storm damage, whereas the cost of the replacement vehicle will total forty-two thousand five hundred dollars and is necessary to continue to provide transportation services for township residents in need. And whereas funds are available in the current capital improvement fund, and thus this resolution does not require the issuance of new debt obligations by the township. Now therefore be resolved, therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that a temporary capital budget authorization is hereby constituted for the purchase of a replacement vehicle for the Department of Public Affairs, not to exceed forty-two thousand five hundred dollars. Be further resolved, municipal clerk is authorized to file a copy of this resolution with the Division of Local Governmental Services, Department of Community Affairs in the State of New Jersey within three days of the adoption of this temporary capital budget item, which will be included in the twenty twenty-four permanent capital budget when adopted by the township sumul.
Second.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas the planning board received an escrow deposit in amount of three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars from Joseph Haynes for property located at two eighty-five Franklin Avenue. And whereas the escrow fee was collected and deposited in an account, T fifteen nine eleven nine eighty-nine, whereas the planning board has reviewed and determined the balance of the escrow account of one hundred and ninety dollars and fifty cents is due to Joseph Haynes. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, Township Treasurer Bean is hereby authorized to refund the escrow fee in the amount of one hundred and ninety dollars and fifty cents to Mr. Joseph Haynes. So move.
Second.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Bishop Petracca, whereas the township of Nutley is in possession of the common vehicles that are no longer functional, two thousand Crown Vic, two thousand thirteen Dodge Charger, two thousand eighteen Charger, two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen Chargers as well, two thousand three Dodge Durango, and a two thousand thirteen Chevy Tahoe. Whereas Bibbs Auto Recycling located at fifty-four Stover Avenue, corner of New Jersey, has offered three thousand for these vehicles. And whereas the township authorized township clerk to release these titles, these vehicles to Bibbs Auto Recycling for the amount indicated above, whereas Bibbs Auto Recycling will pick up the vehicles at one Tremont Place, Nutley, New Jersey. Now therefore be resolved, be now therefore by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Bibbs Auto Recycling will purchase the vehicles and township clerk will release them to Bibbs Auto Recycling. Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, Mayor. Where Department of Parks and Public Property determined due to unforeseen circumstances, families had to cancel participations and programs offered. And whereas Department of Parks and Public Property determined the need to refund families, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Treasurer Bean is hereby authorized to refund payments to recreation programs in the amounts listed below. For folks at four sixty-two Kingsland Avenue for travel basketball in the amount of one hundred dollars for the two thousand and twenty-three year, and for folks at twenty Bayard Street for the fall festival in the amount of one hundred dollars for the same year. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is Commissioner Kelly's resolution. Whereas heart disease is the leading cause of death for men, women, and people of most racial and ethnic groups in the United States. Whereas February is National Heart Month, and February second to two thousand and twenty-four has been designated as where a national wear red day, at which time residents are encouraged to wear red, inspire women to take charge of their health. On this date, all Township of Nutley municipal buildings will be illuminated in red light to bring awareness to this initiative. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex that in recognition of the importance of the ongoing effort to prevent heart disease, we do hereby here we do hereby proclaim February two thousand and twenty-four as National Heart Health Month, and urge all citizens of Nutley to show their support for preventing heart disease by learning more about their heart health, eating healthy diet, and maintaining an active lifestyle. Move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Whereas raffle applications have been received from Nutley Junior Raider Booster Club, license number one twenty-four on premise tricky tray raffle, license number two twenty-four on premises fifty fifty cash raffle, both to be held Saturday, February twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. Whereas the applications have been reviewed and approved by the Municipal Clerk and Police Department. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the aforementioned licenses are hereby approved. The Municipal Clerk is authorized to issue said license. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Whereas bids for the two thousand and twenty-three collection service have designated co-mingle recycling collection service received on and opened on December twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, whereas F Bosso Junior Rubbish Removal, fifty-five ninety-three South Twentieth Street, Irvington, New Jersey, was a responsible bidder. Whereas the term of the contract shall be option one B for a two-year contract with an option for two one-year extensions at the same price, subject to the availability of funds in the subsequent annual budget to be awarded solely at the township's discretion to commence on or about February first, two thousand and twenty-four. Whereas F Bosso Junior Rubbish Removal, fifty-five ninety-three South Twentieth Street, Irvington, New Jersey, was awarded a contract for removal and recycling co-mingle collection services, option one B, three sections in the amount of three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. And whereas the funds are billed from account number four oh one four two three two oh one, an amount of three hundred and forty-five thousand, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer. Said certification be attached to this resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that a contract be awarded to F Bosso Junior Rubbish Removal, not to exceed three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, and that the mayor and township clerk are hereby authorized to enter into and sign such contract with township. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Mayor, just a quick clarification. Since we're operating under a temporary budget, we need to make known that it will be included in the two thousand and twenty-four budget, right? So just adding that language from, you know. Thank you.
As amended by Commissioner Evans. Move the resolution.
Second again.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. That concludes the business portion of our meeting. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns, excuse me. Should approach. I'm sorry. Should approach the microphone and provide their name and address. Yeah. You can approach my.
We're good.
Move an address, please.
Anybody wants to address the Board of Commissioners this evening for three minutes?
Good evening, everyone. Nick the story, I'm a thirty-five Wilson Street, Nutley, New Jersey.
Story, but could you just pick that microphone up a little bit? Thank you.
I just want to stop in tonight just to update what's going on. I don't want to be here. Kind of like embarrassed to be here. It's kind of like I'm begging and pleading, but you know, I have to be my own voice. Because I'm not my own voice. It seems like I don't have a voice. I have an attorney. I'm not fond of him at all. I don't think he's doing his job quick enough. It's been eighteen months. You know, it's one more month. It's seventeen hundred more in debt on my part between the mortgage, between the taxes, between the insurance, between the loan. It's, you know, it's very stressful what I'm going through. It's not as much the money at times. That is anxiety I have, the stress, the sleepless nights. It's even hard for me to talk about certain things because, you know, my daughter attends Rutgers University and I mean, honest to me, she sublet her apartment. I have to stay home this semester. She knew financially it's a little tough. Now, I should never show my kids fear. You know, as a father, as a parent, we shouldn't do that. But, you know, this is a very stressful time for me. I don't think you guys understand the impact. I've said it last time on here. I'm not here to be critical. I still believe all of you have the power to help me. I can't believe it's eighteen months. I still haven't had a chance to sit down, Mr. Bruno, that I've served on the council. Many of you are aware of that. I know that's the easy part. I can't get the easy part. You know, again, I contacted FEMA again because there's days I'm fine, and there's days I don't sleep, and I'm up in the middle of the night. I'm taking notes. I cannot comprehend how the township will not at least give me an opportunity to sit down and just show my cards. I said it last time, you know, you guys were elected not for Mr. Bruno, not for the township engineer, not for outsiders. You elected to serve the people, to help us. Now needless to say, I understand I'm Nutley resident, but I do fortunately or unfortunately have a connection with most of you. And I'm, I'm not here to be critical, but I am disappointed. I'm disappointed. It's been a month and a half since I've been here, and no one's reached out to me for anything. I just, you know, I was on the phone with FEMA recently, just this last week. And this individual there has helped me a lot. And, you know, I have so many documentations showing that. First of all, I got the, and I know I'm displaying my cards right now. I don't really care. I have documentation from, I said this last time, from your engineer. And I showed FEMA. I sat down with FEMA. And they said, well, Nick, obviously they read the maps wrong, and the report is wrong. And, you know, before I had this report from FEMA of me from your town engineer, I can't emphasize enough, six, seven months before I bought this property, I sat down with Dave Berry. I sat down with Sal Ferrara. I, Louis Vataco sat down with both them. My realtor sat. They gave me false, I don't want to say false, because I truly believe no one did this intentionally. They gave me wrong information. I mean, who in their right mind would purchase a property for two hundred and fifty thousand if you know you can't build on it? And I can't comprehend how, and I'm not saying none of you don't recognize it, because you probably do recognize it. You probably feel bad for me. But you guys have the power to help me here. I spoke to FEMA. I called Green Acres. I'm trying to get them to buy the property for me. I know it has to go through maybe, I think, someone's department, the mayor. I don't know what to do. And I can't rely on my lawyer, because I can't afford him anymore. And I know this is perception. I'm rich. I'm not rich. Okay? I work hard and I live a good life. But that has stopped. You know, there's a lot I want to say, but I want you, I wish someone, and please don't take this the wrong way, would be brave enough to make a motion to buy this property or make a motion to talk in private. I'm not familiar with the former government, the Commissioners are. I do know as a former council member, you know, what I can do and can't do. But, and, you know, Mr. Scarpelli, you know, I got a lot of respect for you too. You know, when I got the paperwork from FEMA, the, you know, the paperwork was sent directly to you. Now, I don't know if you get it personally about the ordinance. They gave me so much information how the township was well aware that this land was condemned. The flood administrator, and I'm not here to talk bad about Sal. Unfortunately, well, they used to. His daughter, my daughter, moved together. I don't believe anyone did anything intentional to me. And I fight with my lawyer about this. He thinks you're against me. He thinks you guys are against me. I don't believe that. But I just don't know what to do. And, you know, I don't want to come here every month and plead because I didn't pay this month's mortgage. It's, 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 the ship is sinking. Okay? And again, I'm not in a position to throw away two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And if you guys are, God bless, I'm not.
Story, I certainly don't want to cut wrong, but I know. If they were in a position to be able to communicate with you, they would. Everyone here has a true high opinion of you. But because there's impending litigation that really ties everyone's hands, that's my counsel, that would be anyone's counsel. I would urge you, with your attorney, to set up a call. I will continue to make myself available. And to the extent that anybody can help you, everyone here in this room is interested in the right resolution, whatever's fair and whatever's just. You know, you're aware that there have been communications from the fire office to your attorney, to the extent that we could advance that forward, obviously willing and ready to.
I appreciate that. And unfortunately, he says otherwise. And I don't know why. And I tried. I tried to set up meetings, you know? And like I said, you know, I don't, there's no way any of you, first of all, if you were on this side and I was on that side, I wouldn't hesitate more to make a motion for something. I don't, I, you know, like I said, none of you would ever read what I have and ever disagree with me. I got emails from the building department. Get your permits ready. Let's go. You know, finish them. You know, I got letters from the township engineer. Okay, everything's fine, but we want you to, we want you to change X, Y, and Z. Okay, spend another four thousand. I got letters from the soil place, whatever it's called. Everything, like just, just, I don't even know how one day they woke up and found out I was in floodway. Maybe someone doesn't like me. I'm not perfect. Maybe they withheld something and they waited and they did that to me. I mean, I don't believe that. I don't know how this came up months, eight months later. This is not, again, I got to emphasize. Before I purchased this property, I did my due diligence. And if any of you think that going to the construction official and going to your flood administrator and talking, having them talk to town engineer is not your due diligence, I mean, what else is there for me to do? You know, I just don't get it. And like I said, I know you, listen, I know you have the power to help me fix this. Whether it's purchase the land and you, then you worry about it, because it's not going to affect you. It's not going to affect any taxpayers down. And honestly, it's the right thing to do. You know, people made a mistake at my expense. Listen, I'm not going to go much further. I think you guys hear me now. I'm clear. I'm going to attempt, I mean, I said it last time, you tell me a time and place, I'll be there. And if he doesn't want to come, I'll fire him on the spot. And I'll go pro se.
That's up to you, Mr. Orin. Through your attorney, we try to give him some request for some information that we thought might help us toward settlement negotiation. And that was kind of the last time we heard of him.
Again, and I'm not trying to be argumentative. He tells me something totally different. I wish my wife was here to attest that, you know, I, I went at him all night because because I defended you, you know, not that you need to be defended by nobody. I said, no way. They would never do that. That's not their character, you know? I mean, it's not yours, and I know it's not yours. And I know it's not yours, because I know you've given me the respect from day one. But I need help.
I can tell you the story, Emma, that our instructions to Mr. Bruno is to sit down and at least see what you have and, and go from there. Am I correct, gentlemen?
Trying for eighteen months.
Yeah, Nick, I mean, there, there's nobody here that, that is adverse to trying to help you, but according to Mr. Bruno, and John, I don't want to speak for you, but unless your, your attorney provides him with the information that he needs, he can't even sit down with him to see how this could be resolved, or at least to explore some options. It's not that we don't want to. We absolutely want to. We know you, I know you for years. You're, you're a great guy. You're a great family man. You have a beautiful family. And nobody wants to see you get hurt in any way, shape, or form. But according to Mr. Bruno, we can't do anything unless he provides the information that was requested. I mean, then we can look at what options we have and see what we can do to help, which I believe everyone is willing to do. I mean.
And I, I tell my wife, I truly believe that. But I know you all say you don't want to hurt me, but I'm hurting. It's eighteen months. Mr. Tomorrow, I came to talk to you over a year ago about this, you know, as if not, you know, well, you, you would have married at the time, or whoever. That's what I'm supposed to do.
But Nick, why can't, why can't you get your lawyer to meet with Jonathan? And I don't understand that.
Just provide the.
Because we, I've.
It, this, there's a, that's a matter of opinion from both of them, because I, he tells me one thing.
Well, why don't you bring him here to a meeting and let him say that to him that he would not meet with him? Because that's nonsense, Nick. And again, we can't help you if it doesn't go through him. I've called him a thousand times since you and I.
I couldn't be more.
And, and that's, that's where, that's where the starting point is. And that's what you have to accept. So we can help you. But I don't know of a motion that any of us could make to help you. I mean, if your lawyer's not doing his job, I know you a long time. Get another one. So we could resolve this for you.
Twenty-one thousand we have already.
Yeah, but if it's not.
And honestly, I know.
I know Jonathan, it isn't, I, I've called him a number of times, Nick, and I asked him to meet with you, your lawyer, to, whenever, it's the same answer every single time. Whenever he wants, I'll make myself available. Whenever he wants, I'll make myself available. So he's there right now. I mean.
Listen, again, I'm not here to be critical. I'm saying what I respectfully disagree on a couple of things because I know your counterpart or your partner got involved, and that's when things went awry. And that's when attitudes, you know, started doing this, and I told you one time, I'm screwed now. Okay? Once, you know, I don't know. Listen, we don't have to discuss this anymore.
In case you're.
Yes.
Tell to your opinions, the, the documents that we requested are critical to be able to advise the board whether or not there's liability. That, that this board or any board couldn't simply write you a check.
I understand.
You know, without at least getting some lean that there's a problem.
Mr. Bruno, I mean that with no disrespect, what I just said about the clashing of heads. I mean, I don't mean that in a derogatory way, but I know what happens. I know when, you know, I'm going to send an email tonight to both you and my lawyer. And if he doesn't follow through, he's done. And you know what? I, I think I, I'm better served by myself. And I, I would believe in my heart if I sat down, you know, and we went through things step by step. You know, just, I believe in my heart that you would recognize that, okay, you made a mistake. We told this kid something that was not true. And because of that, you know.
Yeah, Mr. Orin, I'm, I'm, just to real quick. Uh, I agree, you need to communicate, and it would be great if you communicate to both attorneys, uh, and, and, and do that like right away.
I'm, I'm going to go on tonight.
It's confusing to us to try and sit here and try and say, and try and answer this question, why won't these two communicate? Right? Don't understand it. So, and we can't act on it. But what I will tell you, for my twenty-two years sitting on the board with the commissioners and been here with these guys for a long time, when information is put in front of us and we have to make a decision, we don't dwell on it. We don't, uh, slow, we don't go slowly. We go quickly. We are very good about making decisions when they're put, put in front of us. So we're just stuck at the gate. That's it.
Again, thank you. Again, I'm not here.
Nick, get in touch with your attorney. Tell him to get in touch with Mr. Bruno. Uh, at least get us the information we need to make a decision.
Again, thank you. Happy news.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening? Mr. Bruno, do we have a need for executive?
Because, uh, mayor, we need, uh, some time and executive to discuss, uh, contract negotiations.
And potential litigation.
You have a motion?
Second.
Whereas section eight of the Open Public Meeting Act, chapter two, thirty-one, Public Law nineteen seventy-five permits the exclusion of the public from meeting in certain circumstances.